We good, okay Bill? Bill, we all set?
Yes, you're all set.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call this Building Committee, Trumbull Veterans and First Responders Building Committee, Special Meeting to order at 7:00 PM on January 20th, 2022. Marissa, can you read the roll call of members?
Ray Baldwin.
Eric.
Dan Sacco.
Present.
Chief Lombardo.
Here.
Steve Lemoine.
Here.
Mary Beth Thornton.
Here.
Dawn Cantafio.
Here.
Bruce Silverstone.
Here.
Preston Merritt. Doesn't look like he, doesn't look like he's on.
I think he's on a beach in Mexico.
Okay.
Good for him.
All right, thank you. We have a quorum, declare a quorum. Next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag. All right, thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the December 16, 2021 Meeting Minutes. We have a motion.
So moved on Cantafio, there is one typo under website and donation system presentation. I believe it should be Mr. Sacco instead of Ms. Sacco and Mr. Baldwin. So if we could just make that one right, that's okay. Otherwise, I think we're good to go.
Dan, do you have any problem with that?
Well, listen, as Dawn can testify in this town, Nancy's more popular than I am and those more people. So either way, I'm good.
All right, the minutes have been adjusted. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Sacco. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any members of the public that wish to be heard, Bill?
Yes, if there is any member in the public that would, that would like to speak, first see your hand button on the bottom of your screen. Looks like you're all set, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're, we're seeing no one wishing to be heard with closed public comment. Can I have a motion to take item eight out of order? Bill Maher is joining us. He has one short item on the agenda. And we'd like to get that heard and approved. Move second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, Bill. Bill, I know you're on. Can you give us a, an explanation for the invoice? I think it's, it's, was sent out to everyone. It's for WSP for the amount of $594. Bill?
Yes, the $594 was samples that were taken when we were doing test pits on, on the site. So that, that the samples were taken within the building, proposed building footprint and to, to make sure that there was no contaminants there.
Okay.
It was, it was a, it was done to be prudent in cost.
Okay. Does, do any members of the committee have any questions regarding the invoice or the reasons for?
Dawn Cantafio, Mr. Chairman, through the chair, I do have one question. Can you just tell us when it was done and the results, Bill?
The, the test was done back in, I believe it was April, March last year. It was when we were doing test pits for the septic system. And the results were, everything was okay. There was no, there was no hazardous material to be worried about.
Thank you.
Yeah, Dawn, I remember to be, I was on site with Bill and I think George Wiles was on site. My brother from Public Works was on site. When they were doing the test holes to see if the, the prostate was okay for a septic system. So yes, that, that is the case.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions of Bill or of the invoice? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve, Dan Sacco.
All right, Dan, a second?
Second. Steve.
If there's no further comment, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Bill, for joining us.
Thank you, Chairman, and the law.
Thank you. All right, we'll go back to the agenda, item five. Regarding the website donation update, system update, I think Dan is, I know Dan is on. I don't know whether Sujata has joined us or not, but Dan?
Okay, Sujata is not here because she was gonna do it.
Yeah, she's here.
I'm bringing her in now.
Who's gonna be presenting?
Well, Sujata was gonna present it, but I, she's not there. I'll pick it up.
I was in that, I was waiting. Yeah, great. So just an update, Dan and I have been working together with Bill and Zarida to shift the website to have, to be on an e-commerce platform. And that's, that transition has already happened. And now we're keeping, we have a spreadsheet that's keeping track of the checks coming in. So I'll be picking them up weekly and keeping track of the forms that come in along with the checks. And then there's a separate accounting for the PayPal donations that are coming in. Everything is set up through the website. So now the way the e-commerce website platform is set up, when someone purchases an item, it should actually come off the website. So we don't have any confusion and two people purchasing the same item. And, and then we should get a description and a form will be filled out before they can make the purchase and before they make the payment. So we should, once, once those start going through, we should be getting a report from the Wix platform itself that describes the item that's purchased with any information, if it's, if it's naming or a dedication, and then the payment should come through as well. And so I think Bill will be taking over all of the technical, you know, issues that come up with, with the platform itself. And then Dan and I will be talking to one another to coordinate the, the spreadsheets as information is coming in. Because we want to make sure we sort of have multiple checks so that nobody is overlooked, especially once all of the wall plaques are alphabetized. We will, you know, double and triple check to make sure that we've accounted for every donation that came in and every sort of naming right that was requested.
That sounds great. I know that was, was quite a Herculean task to put this all together, given the two different platforms that were involved. So thank you to you and Dan and anybody else who worked on that. I appreciate that. Dan, anything you want to add?
No, no, it's just really important that we cross-reference every contribution. So we make sure that it all works out, every dollar balances from where we are and what category they belong in. So everybody gets what they're purchasing. That's really important. And Sujata has done a tremendous amount of follow-up work on it, and I thank her for that. So I think we're on track and we'll continue to monitor as we go forward to make sure we don't mess that up. Because that's the one thing you don't want, somebody showing up in the name not being where they're supposed to be. So I think we're okay now.
Great, thank you. Does anybody, any other, anybody, do you have any questions of either Dan or Sujata?
Dan Martin. Sujata, Sujata, when do you think you're gonna start depositing funds?
I've been depositing them as they've come in.
To where?
To, we, so Maria set up a separate account.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that, because I hadn't seen anything yet. I have, as of December, I haven't seen anything yet. So have you started fairly recently then?
I did in, actually just in the first, so in the first week of January.
Okay, then I haven't, we haven't seen it yet. Okay, thank you.
So one of the things that we had discussed is making sure that we have a proper accounting of all funds that come in. And I think Preston had stepped forward to say he would kind of manage that process. So I just want to make sure that we're all still in agreement with that being done. So that, you know, 15 months from now, we don't turn around and say, oh my God, what happened to that, you know, $15,000? Or, you know, where did that, where did that $2,500 check go? Right?
So he, he has agreed to do that, Bruce. Unfortunately, the timing of this meeting this evening.
Yeah.
Way, so, but we will get another report from the special meeting, the next meeting that happens, but yes, he's agreed to do it.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're all, we're all as a group, that we're in agreement that that needs to be done. So that, that is gonna keep us on the good side of town folks, I think.
Yeah. So Ray and Bruce, let me ask you a question. One of the things we talked about early on was that the funds that come in from this, we would keep in a separate place and not spend those funds. Are we still following that same path that we need to expend those funds to pay some of the expenses as we go forward?
Those donation funds stay in that fund until we're, we're absolutely sure that we, we have the, to build the building. I don't want to be spending that kind of, that money. No.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
That's correct. The donations are being made for a specific purpose. And it would, I think it would be violating our trust to spend it on something else, so.
Okay, okay, we had said that before. I just wanted to confirm that.
Were there some funds, were there some funds used a while back to help pay an invoice some? I thought I saw something that, Dan, do you remember that there were some funds that were, that seemed to be used from a donation to pay an invoice? Do you recall that?
There, yes, there are. You, you folks authorized the, the Post Office box and all this, the website stuff is being going through here.
Okay, so we had, so we had, yeah, so we have used some of the funds for a couple, yeah, I mean, not, it can't be a whole lot, but.
No, well, we sent the recap out with this meeting. So you can see that I think there's like $2,600 in the account out of the 3,000 that we've taken in already.
So, so would it be fair to say if any funds have to be expended, used to, to pay an invoice, that it must be approved by the chairman? Would that be fair?
That's the process. We don't spend anything unless you tell us the, the, the account is not used unless you tell us to use the account for that.
I think we, we authorized that expenditure either at the last meeting or the meeting before.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Through the chair, Ray, it's Dawn Cantafio. I just wanted to let you know that I did follow up with Preston and, and he is getting all the paperwork. And he should have a report for the committee, probably at the next meeting, just to follow up to show where the money has been spent so far, what the balance is and some of the costs.
I appreciate that. Thanks, Dawn. I appreciate your work on it too. Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is state and federal funding update. Rena could not be on this tonight, but we were both on a call back a week, week and a half ago with the staff of Heim's, Blumenthal and Murphy. Rena is gonna have to do some slight modifications in our grant request from the, the federal government. And she's on top of that. She's, she's got it covered. We're not exactly sure when the next round of applications are gonna go in. Hopefully it'll be within the next couple of months in the spring anyway. So that we got that going. I do have a, a media, I got a call from Heim's office today. He asked if he could, if I could join him at a, a meeting at French Town School next Friday. I'll have an opportunity to sit and talk to him about the, the project directly. Be the first direct contact we've had with, you know, one of our, our, you know, either our congressmen or senators or the governor. Nancy Donard has put out a personal request to speak with Governor Lamont on our behalf. And she's gonna make that contact and report back to us. So that, that's about all we have right now to report on the, on the funding. Is there any questions anybody has? Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is the approval of a couple of invoices that we had from last month's meeting that we voted on. But we have to approve the actual numbers. George Wiles is on the call with us. The first one involves construction documents, preparation. George, you want to speak to that one?
Yeah, that's the, the professional services to present, to prepare a separate set of documents and specifications to go out to bid for the Phase One that work, which involves the demolition of the existing building and going through that whole bid process and then the construction administration portion of it also.
Okay, we'll, we'll handle these one at a time. Does anybody have any questions of George about that invoice? I think the actual amount is $6,450. I think we approved, we approved $7,500. The actual expenditure is $6,450. Does anybody have any questions?
Again, I'm sorry, Dawn Cantafio, Ray. Are we all set now going out to bid with all that you've put together for the documents, George?
It already went out. It already went out to bid, Dawn.
Okay, thanks, Kevin. Everything looks good.
Well, we already had a bid once. So here's a, here, here's where I stand on it. We did a bid once for a demo. I gave George Strata the front end and what we had to do on the second end. Get it knocked down again. He put some extra of, I guess, documents together that we already had done from Anthony Ozzy. Maybe we, you know, added them a little bit. We did the asbestos tests with WSB before. And then in the bid documents, we didn't have that out to bid. And then when the guy, Mike Connors won, me and George sat down with the low bid and discussed who should win. We had to go off another specimen lead, I think inside or outside. That's why the other 1426 is on here. We just didn't use the in-house on-call that we had. But the bid went out, George Strata will tell you, I have all the updates on demolition too. But the bid went out, it's fine. We discussed it. We had a low bid and he is gonna proceed next week.
Okay, great. Thank you, Kevin.
Any further discussion on this, the invoice? Now, the invoice we're voting on is $6,450. I believe you have it in your, your, your packet. Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm moved.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, any, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. The next item is one again that we discussed at our last meeting on December 16th. That is the asbestos and lead inspection by Brooks Environmental. George, can you speak to that too, please?
Yeah, that was for the testing of the possibility of hazardous material within the structure as part of the requirement to demolish, the state requirement to demolish the building. It was our understanding that, that had been done before, but what was done was really just a Phase One, which said there was no hazardous material on site. But a more detailed testing had to be done of the, of the inside. And there was a couple hundred square feet of asbestos tile and some other goo dabbed for the, the roofing flashing.
Okay.
Yeah, so the demo guy sent in the certificate of post abatement visual. He had black car, two bathrooms, below some ceramic, 200 square feet and a black car for the roof vent, five square feet. That all passed. From Big Eastern.
All right, does anybody have any questions about that invoice of the $1,426? All right, do we have a motion to approve that invoice?
I'll make a motion, Dan.
Dan, thank you. We have a second?
Second, Dawn Cantafio.
Dawn, thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll go to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you to prove. We dealt with item eight with Bill, number nine. We have a demolition update from George Estrada, George?
Yes, the demolition update, finally, it appears that all documents are in place. We have Conti Company out of Norwalk that has sent us a notification that tentatively they are scheduled for Monday, the 24th to begin demolition.
How long do you think that'll take, George?
Probably the week to clean it up. It's a small building, so it's, it's really a few days. But by the time they clean up and wrap everything up and leave, I would say the week.
Now, they take all the material away, correct?
Yes.
Clean site?
Yep, everything's removed.
We're keeping the light posts now though, right, George? We're gonna keep the light.
Yes, we are.
What are we doing with the flag poles? That's staying as well?
That's coming down to the yard. There's, in the bid, it was, it was, it was to be transported to Public Works Department.
Oh, good, good. Okay, great. I know, I, I know Ernie's on the call. I know where the Roy Mulgarde is. Ernie, you have any questions of George about the demolition?
Not at all. I think we're all set.
Good, okay. Does any members of the committee have any questions of George regarding the demolition?
Yeah, I have one, the flag pole that you just mentioned. We're gonna keep that and repurpose it.
Yes, that's the hope.
That's the plan, yeah.
When the center is done?
Yes, that's correct.
Hey, Mike, we got a naming right available for that pole.
Thank you. Okay.
All right, George, why we have, why we have you, and I know it's not on the agenda, but you give us an update on where you are with the dredging of the pond?
Sure, we, in, in the, in the capital bonding that has been approved, the five-year capital plan, we had placed, we have a placeholder for the permitting of the pond. The, we recently went through a pretty long process to, to secure the documents, the permits, the state permits to dredge Gunther Pond. And this will be a very similar type of exercise. We have gone in, we've had a survey done of the pond. We've quantified the volume of material that will be removed. And that's, that's between nine and 10,000 cubic yards. And to put that into, into a perspective, a visual perspective, if, if any of you are familiar with our salt shed down at the yard, at, at the Public Works, that salt shed is about 3,000 cubic yards. So it's about three of those, of that area of material that will be coming out of that pond. So we have quite a bit of material that will have to be removed. They, they have been doing the environmental analysis and the volume has been prepared, they report. So now the permitting of that is what we hope to initiate this spring. That permitting will probably take about a year just from experience with the DEEP. There's no way of expediting that. It's just a state and federal process that it has to go through. So it's, it's gonna take a bit for that to happen. We are looking at what alternatives we may be able to identify in the way of where we can place that material, that we would be able to make use of it. Otherwise, the contract will be to completely haul it from Trumbull to an appropriate location.
So I'm gonna ask the question that probably is on everybody's mind. In the event we get the, the funding, we go through with the construction, then you get the permitting about the time we're ready to open the building. How much of a intrusion is that gonna be on the operations of the building?
The building will be dramatically impacted in its operation, day-to-day operation. Because the, it, they probably will have to have some sort of flotation devices that will support the equipment out on the pond that's doing the dredging. The, the material, what we do not have yet is in approved process from the state, which is part of the, the permitting. Gunther Pond, I could tell you that we have to actually lay it down at the pond edge to let it drain before they allow us to remove it. So that is all part of the state and federal permitting, how that material will be handled.
Okay.
But, but it is, it's going to be tricky.
How long, okay, about how long of a process is, is this to dredge upon this size?
That I, I don't, I don't know that, but I will find out. And I could come back at another meeting and give you a more in-depth analysis of how that would be orchestrated.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions of George?
So is it possible that we could be opening a building and the dredging begins at the same time?
Unfortunately, it is possible depending on when the, the building is complete and when, and when the federal permits are made.
So, so I, I, I think that would be a travesty if that happened. If, if those two intersected in, in the way that we just, or I just described, that's a trav, that folks will say, what are you thinking about? Who's planning this thing? So we, is there a way? I mean, I can't, listen, George, I, I know that, that, you know, I'm not, I'm not an expert in permitting at all. But can this be, when we have a date to begin construction and an end date, could you take a look at that and push that back 18 months? So it's not happening on, you know, in the same month that we open up the building?
Yes, we can definitely partner in orchestrating a timeline, Bruce. But when, when it begins, that will require that basically very limited access at certain times of the day. Obviously, the dredging isn't happening at night when events are going to probably be taking place. But just aesthetically to me, that, it's going to make, you know, it's an impact on arrival there and seeing a construction site at the entrance as you're coming in to a beautiful new facility. So I totally understand what you're saying. This is going to take some very careful orchestration. We will have to time it so that you are not opening your door with cranes standing in your parking lot. But with the understanding, we were gonna have, we're gonna have blackout period where once the town receives the permitting, the dredging has to take place. So it'll be careful planning between the two organizations.
Well, the, the next issue is then, you know, how do we, you know, how do we rent out the facility to a wedding, to a shower, to whoever wants to use it? I mean, it's, picture having a wedding there and, oh, by the way, I'd like to see what's dredged up yesterday, you know? So, you know, I say it in jest, but it's, it's an issue that, you know, if we can avoid it. So the pond needs to be drained. It has to be drained in the, in the next several.
No, it won't be drained. The dredging takes place, they will, they're basically removing wet material. So it's not that they're draining that down.
Okay, so the pond has to be dredged. It has to be dredged.
Yes. Yeah, and, and that comes from the silting. It has, it has never been dredged. I could begin that way. And, and it's arriving at a point where it has limited capacity. And that's, and that facility is part of the overall storm water management system for that part of the town. So it's not something that you can just say, well, you know, well, maybe we just don't need to dredge it. We have to dredge it. And this is something the town has been working on for a couple of years. And the, the entire process is just a very slow process when you're working through permitting and state requirements. Gunther Pond took a year and a half to receive permits. And that, and that pond is about a third the size of this.
If that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
So, so, so we, we have, I mean, that's gonna be a public relations nightmare.
Yep. And I, and I've been, and Bruce, I've been talking about this since the first meeting I attended.
I remember, I remember.
I, this, this has been to me, I, I have completely grasped that it, this is a nightmare because it's a collision of two, of two projects. So, so we're gonna need to figure out how we can manage that to, to soften the blow to, to either of the projects. Careful coordination, but there, but you're right. It, there will be, there could be a period where there will be a blackout period where you're probably not going to want to have parties, rent, large rentals of the facility just because aesthetically when they're arriving, if I'm going there for a wedding, I'm not gonna want to see a crane floating in front of the window.
Okay, well, you know, the first thing we find out is certainly one is gonna happen, but also how long a period of time it's gonna be to do it. Maybe you can give us some idea. How, how long did it take, for instance, to do Gunther Pond, once you got started in the permit?
We begin that in June. If, if we watch the process at Gunther Pond beginning in June, we, we will know exactly what to expect at Cat's Pond.
Okay, all right, that's, that'll give us some idea. And like I said, we're, we're still a ways away. But I, you know, I share the same concern, Bruce, and probably everybody else on the committee does, that we run into that situation. We're just gonna have to adapt and overcome somehow. It's, it's unfortunate that it wasn't done many years ago, but that's, that's what we have to do. It's unfortunate that it wasn't done many years ago, but that's, that's we have to deal with, so. All right, thanks for the update, I appreciate that. Does anybody else have any questions for, for George?
Is there a benchmark on the dredging? Cost?
One point six as of today is what we're receiving as a, as a ballpark, but it costs are escalating every day. So by the time we actually go to bid and pull the trigger on this, I'm not sure.
Yeah. So George, George, there is no timeframe right now, do you even think about beginning the process?
No, because we're, we're at the mercy of the process, of the permitting. And, and then all of that is proceeding, the engineering firms are, are preparing all of those documents. We, we've been doing all of the due diligence in order to put everything in place to be able to apply.
And when you said a year and a half, you mean from that, from this timeframe, for the last time, what, a year and a half?
The Gunther Pond, I believe, from when they applied, it took about a year and a half to receive the actual okay and permit back from deep.
Okay.
Plus the bid, and plus when we start now.
Yeah, and then, and then how long it takes to actually do it?
Yeah, 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 it's, so what, so what I, I'll ask is the engineering firm to give us a, an estimate of what the actual process and construction and completion will be from start to finish, just in number of months.
Right, in the best case scenario, you're like, you're looking at two, two and a half, in a best case scenario, you're looking at two to two and a half years from this point.
Yeah, yeah, really.
Okay, okay, at least we know what we're working with, that's all we can do.
Yep.
Okay, all right, there's no more questions of George. The financial update, as you heard, we're gonna postpone till the next, our next meeting. Does any member of the committee have any business they'd like to bring before the committee at this time?
Eric, I just have one question. So I'm talking about the septic tanks. Are we now clear that we could actually put a septic tank there? I mean, George was doing the examination, we had some issues before. Are we now clear we could actually put a septic tank in?
To best of my knowledge, the, the prosody tests were done on, on the site, and we can do an engineered septic system. That's what my understanding is. George?
Yeah, it's just the location, a location that we thought previously, based on some other preliminary explorations in the parking lot, didn't pan out, so we're moving it to the north of the, of the parking lot into virgin area, and we're pretty confident that we can get a septic system up there. Just have to, it's a different system, we're gonna have to pump it.
Okay, so you're not a hundred percent certain yet, but you think we found the solution?
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Okay.
All right, anybody else have any business to bring before the committee?
Eric, I, I want to bring up an issue that maybe it's not a popular issue to bring up, I just want to ask a question. Based upon the fact that we're still trying to get all this funding, when we, when you have the meeting with Heim's, are we still gonna go after a larger amount, or should we go for the one point five, to try to master one point five to the bond?
You know, I'm gonna, I, you know, we, we applied to the, the federal grant, we applied for is three million dollars.
Yeah.
Listen, I, I have a decent relationship with, with Jim Heim's, he's aware of the, the, he, he's aware of our, our project. I'm gonna fill him out on Friday, and I'll, I'll report back and let you guys know what, what he says, what he tells you.
Because if we're confident about what the state's gonna come through, then maybe we'll lower expectations a little of these grants that they have, maybe we have a better shot. I just, I, again, I'm not trying to start, stir it up here, but just bring up.
Well, we see what they have available. I, I know that, like I said earlier, Rena has to do a little, some rewriting on some of the grant language and, and the federal application, and so we'll know more probably in the next month or two, couple of months.
Okay.
Hey, Ray, did Rena said, I thought she said there's a good chance of getting some from Washington also, an application.
That's, that's what we're talking about.
Okay.
Yes, that's what we're talking about, our, our federal delegation.
Hope that works.
If there's no other business to come before the meeting, meeting, uh, uh, come before the committee, I'll entertain a, a motion to adjourn.
So move Dawn Contavio?
Dawn, second?
Dan Sacko.
Dan, okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'll get back to you when, when I hear something after my meeting next Friday, I will send something out to everybody, let you know how it goes.
Okay, thank you, Ray.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Night.
Night.